I'm going to call this Monday, October 21st Planning Advisory Commission meeting to order. First off, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second by the commissioners, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Is there a motion to approve the previous month's minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second by the commissioners, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Are there any conflicts or disclosures of interest?
None.
Seeing none. The first item on the agenda is the Bruce Omen, Omen Farms LLC. And there's kind of two things here. We're going to kind of do them together, but have separate motions. And I'll turn it over to staff.
Sounds good, thank you. All right. So the first part of this request from Bruce Omen and Omen Farms LLC is a plat request prepared by Johnson Schofield. It's a preliminary and final plat of the Omen addition for consideration tonight. This proposal is solely to split up some familial land holdings on property that the Omens own out by Lake Billsby in Stanton Township. Stanton Township is aware of the request for a plat and has not indicated any issues with the proposed plat. So staff is recommending the Planning Commission adopt staff report into the record, accept application, testimony, exhibits, and other evidence presented into the record, and approve the request by Bruce Omen and Omen Farms LLC for preliminary and final plat comprising approximately 131.26 acres. The second part of this request is a request for a rezone of parcel 41180060 from R1 suburban residence to A2 agriculture district to facilitate land combination to avoid creating a split-zoned parcel. Currently, Mr. Bruce Omen owns a single parcel comprising approximately five acres. And this property is zoned R1 residential district and is surrounded by medium-density residential development, land used for row crop agriculture, and the Goodhue County boat launch to Lake Billsby. The applicant during this plating request has proposed to combine this five acres with 27 acres that is already zoned A2. So combining land zoned R1 with land zoned A2 would create a split-zoned parcel, which is very difficult for staff to enforce zoning ordinances on. Rezoning the land to A2 would allow the owner to apply for an interim use permit to operate a contractor's yard on the property that is currently operating without a permit. Staff would note that the interim use permit request would need to be reviewed with a public hearing with the Planning Commission, approved by the county board and by Stanton Township. Tonight's consideration for a rezone should not take into consideration whether the contractor's yard is a permitted or an appropriate use for this area. And that consideration should not be used as a finding to deny the rezoning request. The five acres proposed to be rezoned currently contains a dwelling and an accessory building, as well as a parking area for the owner's business. Rezoning the property to A2 would not have an effect on the dwelling density allowed in the section. No new feedlots would be allowed on any land zoned A2 without variances due to the proximity of other dwellings and land zoned R1 along Lake Billsby. So staff is recommending the Planning Advisory Commission adopt the staff report into the record, accept the application, testimony, exhibits, and other evidence presented into the record, and recommend the county board of commissioners approve the map amendment request to rezone five acres from R1 to A2. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is the applicant present and want to add anything?
Yeah.
Just step up to the microphone, say your name.
Bruce Omen. 29764 23rd Avenue Way, Cannon Falls. Just looking to split my grandpa's farm and rezone mine to my five acres day two since I'm combining it with the 27 acres that I'm getting.
Any questions from the board?
None.
Yeah, I have no questions either. Thank you.
All right.
All right, well, we will go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone from the public wish to comment? Second time, anyone from the public wish to comment? Okay, come on up, state your name.
All right, my name is Jason Nato, and I live at 29703 23rd Avenue Way, which is right across from that construction yard. So obviously, I do worry about the home values in the area if this is allowed to grow any further than what it is now. It began with one dump truck and then, you know, just continually added to it. While I support anybody doing or beginning their own business, I just don't feel like this is the place for this type of business. And I know that's not necessarily at this hearing, but it is a residential area. And I believe you guys allow split parcels as well, right? That's not necessary to combine zoning?
Well, we're not discussing, we're just discussing this right now. We're going to, if he wants to do his thing.
Yep, but there's no laws that prevent you from having two different uses on property, right? So you can own five acres, and then you can have 27 acres that's ag, right? There's no...
I would turn that over to staff.
Yeah, there's no law or anything that says it can't be split-zoned.
Right, so the only advantage for Bruce then is to try to get a conditional use permit, essentially.
He just took what they... He has to have all these... He is a county... He gets married together right now, so he has to have all these... Hard work hard. You can't get a car...
The only thing I'll say is it's right across from my property right now, which will undoubtedly affect property values. So that's my concern.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Third and final time, anyone else from the public wish to comment?
I have a motion and a second to close public comment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Discussion up here.
Omen addition was through the final plat review, except for finding a fact of Thomas Overindrich.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second for the first part. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries. We'll move on to the second part, the map amendment rezone. Discussion here.
I don't know, I think it does make sense. I have to move it forward to the commissioner.
Second that.
A motion and a second to approve the second part, the map amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion also carries. Thank you, you guys are free to leave.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to our second one. And that is something we had tabled last month, the request for text amendments for the Everie River LLC.
Right. So yeah, the public hearing for this item was held last month, September, and so we are not having a public hearing on this tonight. However, I do know that some township representatives are here and would like to have their voices heard during this process, which we do encourage townships to let us know their thoughts and, you know, feelings and everything. So we will be giving them a time to come up after I'm done talking. So this is a request for a text amendment to the Goodhue County subdivision ordinance and the zoning ordinance to allow planned unit developments, or PUDs, as a conditional use in the commercial recreational district. PUDs allow for separately owned units that can be for sale, for rent, or for lease. Each unit is its own property that does not need to meet minimum parcel size or setback requirements. If the amendment is approved, this language would apply to all five properties zoned commercial recreational in Goodhue County. The Planning Commission tabled this request so staff could contact affected townships and research questions posed by the Planning Commission regarding limiting the length of stay in residential units that people own. The zoning administrator attended a Cannon Falls Township meeting, October 9th, and the Cannon Falls Township was concerned with staff's ability to enforce the temporary residence requirement of the draft ordinance, but they did not have any additional concerns or comments with the issue at hand. Hay Creek Township replied to staff's emails, they simply said they didn't have any questions about the proposed ordinance language. Mineola Township called staff and stated that they are not in favor of the PUD amendment, and my understanding is they may have someone in the audience here tonight to speak to the board. And Vasa Township had not, never responded to staff's request for comments. Let's see here. During the September meeting, a Planning Commission member noted that Cook County's planned unit development ordinance includes density calculations. Staff has added these calculations to the proposed PUD language for your consideration tonight. These can be removed if the commission would like. Staff also reached out to Cook and Lake County zoning administrators regarding the short-term residency in privately owned PUD units. Cook County responded saying that they have the opposite problem up, this is on the north shore of Minnesota, that their citizens and commissioners want to add long-term housing so that they can get employees to work in local businesses, of course, in that area of the state. Several of their PUDs have short-term units and long-term units that are all privately owned. They rely on conditions added to the PUD approval, and the homeowners association agreements are reviewed by staff for language as to the length of stay based on conditions. Staff also did additional research, found some language in Winona County regarding what they call recreational cabins. Winona County recreational cabins cannot be occupied more than 180 days in a calendar year. Staff reached out to Winona regarding enforcement of this provision of their ordinance, and they stated that it would be like a typical enforcement case, it would be on a complaint basis, and they rely on permit data and property notes for enforcement. The Planning Commission could elect to add language similar to Winona County for PUD temporary residence requirements. Alternatively, the Planning Commission may consider allowing long-term residency in PUD units, perhaps on a, you know, 40% are long-term, 60% are short-term. I know the applicant is going to bring some of that up when given time to speak tonight. Staff's draft ordinance does not need to be adopted as it is written, is essentially my main point here. So I will also kind of go into, on October 14th, I attended the Florence Township Planning Commission meeting to discuss the proposed PUD language. The discussion was lively between the applicants, residents of Old Front Neck in Florence Township, the Planning Commission, and myself. Residents and the Planning Commission were very apprehensive to support the PUD proposal, specifically as it relates to the Villa Maria property. They questioned implications this would have on the township, whether they would have to allow PUD development even though they do not have specific standards for it in their ordinance. They questioned how a PUD could affect the rest of the Villa Maria as far as adding dwellings, campsites, cabins, how it would affect the historic nature of Old Front Neck, and there was a resounding support for the county and the township to study the impacts of PUDs before making a decision on the language. With these concerns in mind, the Florence Township Planning Commission unanimously recommended to their town board that the town board send comments to the county that they do not support the PUD language and would like the county to take more time considering implications of this language, giving Florence Township time to study it and craft their own ordinance This, so then, my comments now. Staff comments regarding this. The text amendment request was received August 23rd, 2024. The county had 60 days to make a decision on the matter. After the Planning Commission tabled this in September, I administratively extended consideration to December 20th, 2024, as allowed by state statute. The county must make a decision by December 20th to avoid the item being automatically approved under state statute. With this timeline in mind, this body could table the item one more month until the November 18th meeting, and the county board would need to make a decision after holding a public hearing in December. Florence Township was asking for multiple months for additional consideration by the The alternative to a PUD is creating a cooperative CIC where leases are issued to members of an association and the units are not split. It does not create individual parcel ID numbers. This was presented to the owner as an option in the spring of 2024. A new conditional use permit would be required to change from a hotel to leases. We're talking about the Villa Maria building here, so everyone's clear. Staff would still need to address temporary residency requirement likely via an HOA agreement. And just for the public's interest, several comments and questions might be brought forward about the Villa Maria parcel itself, plans for the property, et cetera. Tonight, the Planning Commission is only being asked to consider the PUD language that would affect all commercial rec properties in the county. The Planning Commission should not deny the language or approve it solely based on one property's proposal. So with all of that, staff is still recommending the Planning Advisory Commission adopt staff report into the record, accept application, testimony, exhibits, and other evidence presented into the record, and approve the text amendment request to add PUDs to the subdivision ordinance. And another motion would be needed to approve adding PUDs to the zoning ordinance. Any motions to deny should be accompanied by stated reasons for denial on the record. I'll leave it there.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant present, want to add anything new that hasn't already been said?
Good evening to the board. Again, my name is Megan Smith. I'm the owner of Everie River LLC. I was here last month. I was present at the Florence Township Planning Commission meeting last week as well, and would agree with what Samantha said. What I'm here really to emphasize, and I don't know if I emphasized it well enough last month, is that my application and petition benefits the entire county, specifically benefiting commercial recreation zoning districts. I look at your comprehensive plan and your commercial recreation district, and it is a fantastic district that allows really good uses that enhance what I call destination tourism in Goodhue County. They are situated in picturesque settings that are located on streets that are, they're all located on roads and road networks that have the ability to handle the traffic. Any issues that specific townships or neighbors bring up can be addressed through the conditional use or PUD process. Again, this is not permitting any specific conditional use or PUD, it's just opening the door to allow individual owners to consider it as an option. With that, I thank you, and I would be available for any questions.
All right, thank you. We'll go ahead and reopen the public hearing, correct? Or how do we? We're not opening the public hearing, we're just asking...
No, but we'll take comments from any representatives from townships that may be present.
That's how I wanted to say it. Is there any representatives from townships that would like to speak? Just come on up, state your name, where you're from.
I'm Mary Vasit from Mineola Township. Our board discussed this, and our biggest problem with it is the split and sale ability. We're not really in favor of the sale part because we're afraid what this would do is create cluster housing. We have a campground in our township. There are some cabins there that they do rent out. If they split that out and can sell it, we have a problem because our housing density has already been met in our township. We do not want cluster housing out there. There have already been problems where people have moved out from the cities, bought a house in the rural area, and then complained because the farmer is still in the field at 8:00 at night. Sorry, that's our life. We can't change that just because you decided to move out here. But our biggest problem is the sale. We don't mind if they come out and they rent it, they lease it, whatever. We're just afraid of what the sale would do. It would set a precedent that we are not ready to accept. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mary. Any other township?
Good evening, I'm Nathan Opedal, 29041 Leroy Avenue in Front Neck, and a member of the Florence Township Planning Commission. And just want to thank Samantha for her representation and her attendance at the meeting and her representation of what occurred. She did a great job, and it was spot-on. There were 45 attendees at the meeting, there was high interest in the township for this particular topic. And essentially, the township is trying to, would like to see, in this case, the Villa Maria property succeed, you know, and it's been a bit of a journey over the last few years with Mr. Rupp. So it's not about not wanting that to succeed, it's how we go about that process. And there, the planned unit development approach could in fact be the right model from our perspective. We just would like a little more time to understand those implications, to take a look at our ordinances, which have some restrictions in other parts from the county, as you might be well aware, and determine whether or not we want to put language in our ordinances to help with the particular situation in the Florence Township. We'd like to do that, you know, as this moves forward, rather than trying to catch up if the county puts this language in its ordinance. And so that's why, perhaps a little more time, and I think six months came up or something, you know, we're obviously a volunteer board, we're, there's a lot going on, and we're just trying to do what's right by our residents and those that want to invest in the township. The one part of the PUD that seemed a little bit contradictory to some of the intent that we heard, or that I heard, I should say, is trying to establish in kind of this residential historic community, a more of a sense of ownership and residence, yet there are residential restrictions in the PUD. You can't have your permanent residence there. It's meant to buy and then lease out. So in some ways, that's a little contradictory to the spirit of, I think, what Mr. Rupp in this case was stating he wanted to do, which is very much in the interest of the township to kind of uplift more permanent residences and people that appreciate the area. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Any other township representatives here? Other township representatives here? I don't, okay. So we can move on to discussion up here, correct? I don't have to close public?
No.
Yep, okay. All right, discussion up here between the commissioners?
One comment, I guess. I appreciate the language that you added as far as the density and the open space. That was my intent, and I do like that. We did discuss this at our town board meeting also, and as most of you know, Pinnon Township is really welcoming to more residential, not this way. I don't think it's the right way to do it. I guess I also would be more comfortable if it were an activity where they could lease around and you own it, not to actually own the par.
Getting that, then basically, somebody's going to own the whole thing, and they're going to handle, so we're not going to be worried about this person or that person. Now, I have the tax implication when they come down, property tax, and if you have 200 people tracked down versus one.
Well, it never has made any sense to me that you own the property and cannot live there for 365 days. That just doesn't, from a personal standpoint, that just does not make sense. And then to allow the homeowners association to actually administer it, I don't like that part of it either, to be honest. So as far as whether to table it and move on or to just deny it for those reasons.
Other thoughts up here?
Sam, for a point of clarification, if we were to table this, obviously, we have a reason to do that, but you said it will automatically be approved on December 22nd if no action is taken by the county?
If you were to table it again tonight, we would bring it back again, November 18th, and ask for a decision on that day.
But that would allow Florence Township to get all their stuff together?
To look at it a little further.
To look at it more, correct?
Maybe a little bit, but like Nathan mentioned, they were asking for, you know, multiple months of time to draft ordinances, pass ordinances, conduct a study, and things like that. But November 18th would not allow for that kind of a timeline.
Now, even if the board here approves it and/or tables it, we can, Florence Township can still present information up till the 17th of December in front of the board, correct?
Right, so if this were to, let's, hypothetical, this board passes it on to the Board of Commissioners recommendation for either approval or denial. The Board of Commissioners does have to have a public hearing, so in that case, you would likely have multiple residents from Florence Township, property owners and everything coming with their comments. However, the county board would have no leeway to table that again. You would have to make a decision on December 17th or whatever day that is.
Oh, either way, it's, that's the cutoff date, December, whatever, 7th?
20th.
20th or whatever, so.
Yep.
I like the additions that you made after last month's meeting, and I appreciate the input from the additional townships that had comments. I just, I struggle with tabling it again because I'm not sure what we will be looking for if we were to push it down the, and it does put the commissioners into kind of a tight pickle as to what they're going to do, so.
I guess the reason I would consider tabling is for consideration for the local government, you know?
And I don't disagree with that, it just, it sounds like, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it doesn't sound like a month is necessarily going to be enough time for you to do the things that you need or wish to do with.
You can come back if you want. Okay, sure.
I wasn't sure, yes. I think...
Say your name real quick.
Nathan Opedal with the Florence Township Planning Commission. I appreciate the discussion and the opportunity, perhaps, for additional time. One month is probably, you know, trying to push it as far as us trying to get all of our ducks in a row to appropriately respond and/or potentially, you know, take a look at our ordinances and draft some language to make sure we believe we've got the proper guidelines and everything in place. And so, in the discussion that we had at the township, from our perspective would be, again, we're not opposed necessarily to PUDs in the future, it's just we just would like some more time to consider it. And so, from our perspective, we were, we were kind of stating publicly, we would like to see it denied, and then we can, you know, the applicant and others can come back again, you know, at any point in the future and approach this again. And that would give us, in the meantime, time to take a look at these and potentially, again, update our ordinances so that we can... again, update our ordinances so that we can respond appropriately. Any other questions?
One more question for Sam. If the county does approve this, the Florence Township can have a stricter ordinance than what the county has, correct?
Right.
But then they would be in charge of the enforcement.
Right.
And also, if this is approved, this is not approving anything in particular, it's just changing the language. Everything would still be, that particular idea that we will not mention, that you told us not to consider specifically for this, would have to go through a series of conditional use permits anyway.
Correct.
So.
My only comment on that is, is if we, opportunity out there to anybody.
Have to be in the commercial.
Yeah.
Only have five in the county right now?
Chair, that's where, you know, this is always a struggle, because we're, right now, we're looking at a county decision here. I understand and I feel for Florence Township, because they're looking at a specific thing already, and I've seen this a few times in the past where deadlines come in, we had that happen in Welch many years ago with a demolition landfill, of which the township still has. If they feel rushed because of timelines, they could file and put a moratorium in place specifically to this one thing and do their six-month study, which buys them time. And I know back and forth, getting ideas back and forth always works best, because they want to work with townships as much as possible, but we also have to remember, we're looking at it at the county level thing, and they do have that option, that they could do that route if they want, you know, if, say, commissioners pass it in December, they could buy time for their township before their specific one project would, that would be applied for or anything. So you just want to throw that out there to kind of get a little more thought as to looking at the whole county thing and a couple options for the townships, because that's what we had, we had do that in Welch, because at that time, we had no zoning ordinance, and we're at the mercy of the county, and county had no choice but to approve that conditional use permit for demo landfill, because everything fed in. And we did a, with an extension, 18 months, it took to do a zoning ordinance, of which by that time, the operators decided that there was too much, too much concern, and they walked away from it, but we just got lucky on that part. But it is a way to, once the decision's made here, they still have a little avenue to buy them some more time versus either it's denied or for the whole county or automatically approved if don't make the deadline.
We just, considering this based on one project with the Villa Maria, nobody else has come up with this whole thing. Are we trying to make something work for somebody else rather than what's actually good for the county? Myself, I'm not comfortable with putting this in. So I feel, but I'm not sure I want to have, in my eyes, a part-time condominium with people moving in and out. Like Richard was saying, one person owns it, they've got responsibility for the whole thing. When I rent someplace, I'm not saying I'm a bad tenant, but I have no ownership. I'm going to be there for a week, a month, and I leave, and who cares what happens after I leave? If you personally own something, you're more apt to take ownership. Now, you've got somebody saying, like Richard said, I own this and I can only take in either 180 days or whatever happens to be, that doesn't make sense. What's the difference if you're there three months or all year? And if a person wants to take in sublease of the Airbnb or whatever you want to call it, that's basically what we're taking and doing here, setting up as a business. I'm not sure if it's good or it's bad, I'm not sure I'd want to have it next to my house. I don't think I want it in Belkirk, don't you?
Sam, my apologies, and you may have mentioned this in the last meeting. Did you get feedback from any of the owners of the other, of the five recreational districts in the-
No.
Okay. Any motion of any kind, I guess?
Well, I'm going to move to deny, and based on what I had stated earlier and the support Tom has given me, that at least gets us to the point of having a vote. Opportunity, I think that denying it would give us an opportunity to refine it too, as far as the county level goes. I'm not saying it's a bad idea. It maybe is the future, but I don't think we're ready right at the moment to do that. I'm going to move to deny.
We have a motion and a second to deny this request. All those in favor?
Oh, questions? If this does get denied, it can be brought back again, say, in the spring?
So if this, if the Planning Commission recommends to deny, and I would have you do two motions to deny both of the subdivision and zoning ordinance amendments, the applicant still can elect to have us bring this to the county board level to make a formal decision on it, of course. Typically, there's the six-month rule where you can't reapply for something, again, six months after the decision.
We have to have a reason to deny it.
Yes. I've heard plenty of reasons.
You're good?
Yeah.
So, any other discussion? So we have a motion and a second to deny it. All of those in favor of denying, say aye. I'm going to do a roll call on this, just to be sure. Mr. Gill, in favor or deny?
In favor.
You're, sorry.
I'm in favor of denying.
He's in motion. In favor of the motion to deny it.
Yes, would you like to deny this? Okay, Mr. Fox?
I oppose it.
Miller?
I oppose.
Oh, Mr. Gresson?
I'm going to say no or oppose it.
I also am a no.
Okay, so it's three to two, so now-
And you, what is your vote?
I would go with the deny, so now we have a split vote, three to three.
Okay. So ties are a denial. So, so that would mean that-
That motion fails.
The motion fails.
Motion fails. So, the motion fails for lack of majority. Okay. All right.
Well, I know I don't want to do this, but how about we table it one more month? If Featherstone can come up with something else?
Florence?
Florence, I mean, yep.
I have no problem with that. One more.
Because it actually is two months before it hits the county commissioners.
But then, as a county commissioner, you're going to have to decide at that-
We need to really research this thing before it hits us in December.
But you then can bring it up at your next county commission meeting and say, hey, we got to be ready for this.
I was kind of hoping they would just ask us, you know, right to you. You know, it's all, never do anything that you can let somebody else do.
Right. We value this board's decision a lot, so, a lot of, what do we call it, institutional knowledge here, so. I'm looking at you two guys mostly. So, I would make a motion that we table it till November.
Both?
Both of them, yes. Or don't we have to table both of them?
Last time, we only did one motion to table it, so.
Okay, let's do one motion.
So we can go back and say, hey, we're going to table this one more time to allow Florence to get some more ducks in a row or whatever.
Whatever they can do in a month.
In a month, okay? All right, so now we have a motion.
A second, Ed.
We're going to, we have a motion to table it, and we have a second to table it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We are going to table it. We will see you guys again next month.
Thank you.
This is- All right.